All right, we've got 7:05. Let's see who we got on hand here. Keith, hi Keith, how are you?
Good, now that I'm unmuted. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you. John, good to see you again, John, from the select board. Dan's here. Yes, we, we've got a forum, but without further ado, I'm going to open and convene the October 21st planning board meeting for town of Southampton via Zoom. We've got somebody else. Tracy wants to come in. Let me, Tracy. It's televised on channel 191 on the cable TV network and this building permit that came in late yesterday, I'm going to handle first. I emailed you folks the plan. It's for Pellegrini Estates. It's 6 Quigley Road, a lot that they have. I'm going to share my screen here and bring up the plan. If I can find it. Everybody see that?
Not yet.
We see your folder with the files.
What am I doing wrong here? I can see it on my end. What am I not doing right?
Is it the screen that you're sharing? Are you sharing, perhaps, do you have multiple screens?
It says I'm screen sharing. I can see it, but you can't, huh?
So stop the share and start, start that again, rather when you, there you go, start again.
Okay, so go to the file or go to share screen?
Don't, don't you have to open up the file first, then go to share screen?
I did originally. What am I doing wrong?
Do you have two computer screens, Paul, or just one?
Just one.
There it is.
You got it?
Yeah.
I don't know what the hell I did, but I did it. Everybody got it?
Yes.
Okay, this is for 6 Quigley Road. It's a building permit. As you can see, and those of us that are familiar with the site behind that is the stormwater management system for the entire subdivision, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong. Shows a driveway of 50 feet in a house that's 50, 50 by 35 within that building envelope. Any questions on that?
I'll just say, Paul, I'm familiar with this lot. I'm not a 300-foot of butter, but I'm, you know, obviously familiar with a lot. So these lots, by requirement, are greater than 60,000 square feet. So normally, if, you know, a lot of this size of 62,920, you know, would be a little concerning because it could potentially exceed the 40,000 square foot of development. However, like you alluded to, a good 55% of this lot is occupied by wooded area and the detention basin, which obviously they're not going to clear into. So, you know, if they cleared all available area on this lot, they might hit 30,000 square feet. The lot is pretty well barren at this point. Anyway, there's not much in the way, a tree area where the building envelope would occur. So I really just know, knowing the lot pretty well, I don't see how this would ever come close to 40,000 square feet. The detention basin area is all seeded. It's established. There'd be no reason to disturb that area. So I personally am pretty confident it'd be well below our purview of stormwater.
Any other questions or comments on that, Paul, Cindy, Dan?
Nothing to add.
Nothing here?
Nope.
I'll, I'll make a motion to endorse the building permit then.
Second.
A second?
A second.
Motion by Keith and second by Dan. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All are aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll get back to the first public hearing this evening. And Mark Reed, where are you? There you are.
Yep, we're here, Paul.
Mark Reed is here for the applicant. Let me read the public hearing announcement that was published October 6th and 13th in the Daily Hampshire Gazette. Notice hereby, given in accordance with the provision of MGO Chapter 40A, Section 5, Planning Board will hold a public hearing on a residential stormwater permit application Wednesday, October 21st at 7:00 PM via Zoom on an application from Fred Milkie Jr., 89 Pleasant Street, map 20 parcel 56C. This is in conformance with the Stormwater Bylaw Regulation, Section 14. Details may be requested by contacting southhamplanningboard@gmail.com. This will be televised on East Hampton Media Channel 191. Paul Dean and Chair, Southampton Planning Board, and again, was published October 6th and 13th. Mark has submitted his application and his letter. The Mark, not to steal the show on you, but I'll just give some highlights of your letter. Proposed work will disturb approximately 56,000 square feet of open field area. Approximately 85, 57 square feet of impervious surface will be created within the disturbed area. Limited number of trees will be removed and maintained as a lawn area. Erosion and sediment control stormwater management package also includes the following items. Three prints of the plan. Certified list of abutters, of which I personally stuffed the notice and mailed. Six addressed stamped envelopes for abutters within 100 feet. One check and the amount of $75, which I also received for the application fee. I mean, I believe that's pretty much that part. So Mark, I'll let you continue on that.
Sure. Sure, if you allow me to share, Paul, and I can put the plan up for everyone.
You can probably share better than I can.
Some nights I have issues. So can everyone see that?
Yep.
Good.
How do you do that?
Well, I open it before I go to share on my desktop. So that's the key.
You think I'm going to remember that, do you? Go ahead.
Yeah. So this is a parcel of land that is 1.451 acres of land at the corner of Pleasant Street and Woodmar Lane on the west side of Pleasant Street. As noted in the cover letter, that the majority of the lot is already an open field. And it's also shown on the plan itself. Mr. Milkie, for the record, is here as part of this Zoom meeting. And just wanted to make sure that that was in the records. So there is a line of trees that run along Woodmar Estates on the southerly side of the property and a line of trees along the frontage of Pleasant Street. Mr. Milkie would like to build a three-bedroom house being located approximately right in the middle of the property as well as a garage and shop in the rear right-hand corner of the property. The plan also shows a sewage disposal system which conforms with Board of Health and Title V regulations. So as far as tree clearing, there's very little. There are a couple of trees that are needed to be removed for the proposed driveway and a couple of brush. It's kind of brushy on the south side. That would be cleaned up and maintained. The couple of reasons for the amount of fill on the property is one, in order to comply with Title V and meet the requirement of five-foot separation to the seasonal groundwater. The system had to be, or the land had to be raised up. And so in doing so, to comply with Title V and the detail down here, you'll see the minimum separation that the estimated seasonal high groundwater, to have a gravity system from the house, the house had to be set up higher. So that in doing so, Mr. Milkie would like to have, you know, a flatter yard area facilitate the amount of fill brought into the site in itself for that. We have on this plan, kind of small to see scale-wise, erosion control barrier being a straw waddles being proposed along the entire westily boundary line and wrapping around the northerly boundary line. The existing contours kind of flow in kind of the northerly direction towards this back corner of the property. And after construction is done, it's still going to flow in that normal or in that general direction. We're putting a culvert underneath the driveway so that any water, stormwater that collects over in this area can continue to flow towards the rear, right rear corner of the property in itself. Again, it's a single-family house. We've asked for a waiver, like we've done in previous submissions. For the project, the plan still has to get filed with the Board of Health before, you know, building permits are issued. So with that, I can answer any questions that people might have?
Questions from the board?
Mark, maybe you've covered it, but I think I caught in the notes there. So it's, you're estimating an approximate disturbance of 56,000 square feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So the other thing I want to mention on it is the parcel to the north is a vacant field area to the north. Lot number one, which is on Woodmar Lane, will have a single-family house constructed on it. But the disturbance run around the entire perimeter of the work area.
Yeah, pretty much the entire lot then.
Right. I mean, the only areas that were not disturbing is along Woodmar in this wooded section. On a Keith, and then, you know, along the frontage, we want to maintain the trees, the existing trees that are along Pleasant Street for privacy.
So I have a question. Does this property fall under the homeowners association for that subdivision?
No, it does not.
Is there, is there a homeowners association for the remaining part of Woodmar? Is, is that so?
Yeah, the rent, the lots on Woodmar are part of the homeowners association. This lot has its frontage
Pleasant.
and access from Pleasant Street and not coming off of Woodmar. All the utilities coming into the lot are coming from Pleasant Street and not servicing off of Woodmar. So there, he, you know, this lot is not part of the homeowners association.
Okay. And then you said the vacant land to the, is that north over here, parcel A? Is that potentially going to be developed? Is that owned by someone that might be developing? You don't know the answer to that?
I don't know for sure. I know the parcel wraps around to a larger piece and it's under 61. And it's currently being known as a
Okay, thank you.
Paul, Dan?
I guess, go ahead, Paul, sorry.
So for erosion control measures, you have a you have a silk, silk, silk fence all around your properties. Is that, is that what I'm seeing here?
Yeah, waddles, yeah. Yeah, we're using straw waddles.
Okay, waddles. I can't see from
Yeah, yeah, there'll be nine-inch straw waddles running around the construction area.
I don't have any further questions.
Dan? Well, I think it's, it's more of an education question. Obviously, I try to ask these as I'm new. So it is large, larger disturbance area, but it's not trees. It's, it's grassland. Does that, does that matter? Or does that take, I guess, impact our decision at all?
I mean, I can answer that, Paul. So your regulation under the, your bylaw talks about land disturbance. And land disturbance under the definition is anytime you go in there and disturb any land with a bulldozer or a piece of equipment, whether it's got trees on it or not, still falls in the category of land disturbance. And that's typical to your bylaw and most of all other bylaws that are either in other communities or state.
Just by the looks of the design there, Mark, and my board members can comment or not, I really impressed with the design, how you've got that worked around the, the entire area and where you're channeling it. Seems to be a well, well-prepared plan there.
Thank you.
Is there a, a right-of-way of some kind or of some, some sort? I'm looking at the assessor's map right now and unless I'm reading it wrong, it looks like some kind of a right-of-way or access, I don't know, electric lines or something on the north side of that?
Yeah, so associated with Woodmar Estates.
Yeah.
For all subdivisions now, there is a easement for Western Mass Electric, Verizon and charter that runs along this side of the property. Typically now in all subdivisions, they, they require a 10-foot wide easement. So yes, there is that. And this, this services underground utilities to Woodmar State.
Actually, it's not there that I was looking. It was more north of that on the opposite side of the property. Maybe, it's not showing on your map.
Yeah, right. It's, it's on the abutting piece to the north. It's not on our property.
Okay, it looked like it went a little bit in the corner of this property. That's why.
Yeah, it does not.
Okay.
And it's on the abutting piece to the north.
What is that easement, do you know?
That easement is a drainage, the town drainage easement.
Oh.
There's a culvert underneath Pleasant Street. I don't know, somewhere up in here, maybe where it says legend on the plan. It runs from across the street, takes stormwater runoff from across the street and discharges it into the back of the farm field. And town put that storm drainage in, I don't know, 20 years ago or whatever.
Okay. But does that affect this plan, this stormwater plant at all?
No, it does not.
Okay.
It does not.
Any other questions from the board or anybody from the public that's here wants to comment tonight at all?
I just have another question, Mr. Chair. Mark, could you, could you zoom in around the, the anti-tracking pad?
Sure. Okay, let's see. Now, that's one thing I have difficulties with, Paul. Show me it comes up in a little box. And you have to, oops, wait a minute, I think I got to move this to the other side. I think it shows up here on one of these. That's one I haven't mastered.
Well, I'll make an educated guess, Mark. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but kind of diagonally across the street on the, on the opposing side, is that a catch basin, kind of pretty much directly under the word stone tracking map?
Yeah, on the opposite side of the street?
Yeah.
And there's a catch basin, and there's a series of catch basins that run that take stormwater runoff from Pleasant Street. Actually, there's, there's another catch basin that we don't show on the plan to the right or to the north of that piece. And that's, that's where the pipe and culvert is underneath Pleasant Street.
Okay. So just, I mean, my, my concern, and I'll let you give your professional opinion, you know, I guess my concern with the, with the tracking pad being that close to that catch basin with, you know, obviously, this is an import site, meaning we're importing, you know, a common fill to raise the grade. Is there any concern during the course of construction, if we had a rain event, that we might have any sedimentation flowing, I guess this would be from the site to the east into that particular catch basin? You know, an easy resolution would be using a silt sack or, or some other type of protection. So I'll, I'll let you answer that, Mark. And I asked that because I know this section of Pleasant Street is relatively flat in terms of not much of a cross slope from, from Centerline Road. So that's the, I see with that is maybe that's a potential area we, we put in a silt sack.
Well, I don't think so, Keith, to be honest with you, because the site itself flows westally in the opposite direction of Pleasant Street. We are not changing the existing topography or grade along Pleasant Street. So this is a low area. So the topography is along Pleasant Street is roughly at 267. And if you look at, I'll look at a bigger plan, the bottom of the swale is 265. So the bottom of that swale system that runs along Pleasant Street is two feet lower than Pleasant, Pleasant Street.
Yeah, they're like the gutter line at Pleasant Street. Okay.
Right. So, so, you know, I don't believe, I mean, we could, if you want to make a condition, put a, you know, sock in the, in the catch basin, but I believe it's going to stay on site. And then once you get to around this area where the flows, it says flow, that's elevation 264. So, you know, there's three feet difference in elevation or lower. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure we kept this swale around here is to make sure that site didn't go out into Pleasant Street.
You have a recommendation on that, Keith, then?
I mean, I, I guess, and, and Mark, I agree with your assessment after you talked through the grade, the existing site grades. My, my only concern, you know, I've seen this where we're bringing in, you know, I don't know if you have an estimate on how much material, film material is going to have to be brought into this site. But it's quite common as trucks are leaving, you know, the site, the tracking pads, they do an okay job, but every now and then you've got a clump of dirt stuck on the back end of the triaxle that, you know, is going to fall off into the road, potentially end up in that catch basin. Is it a lot of dirt? No. You know, could it accumulate into, you know, a cubic yard of dirt over the course of construction? You know, maybe, probably not, but I, I guess, you know, maybe enhance the overall design here, Mark. I would, and it's, and it's an easy thing to do, and I know you know it's an easy thing to do. I would, I would make the recommendation that we add a silt sack into that catch basin. Just in, in the unlikely event we do have a major rain event, or let's say there's sedimentation trapped in that stone tracking pad, we have a major rain event, and now we've got, you know, wash, you know, a little bit of washout into Pleasant Street. At least we can say, well, there's a silt sack in that catch basin directly across from the project. So I think it's a, I think it's low-hanging fruit. I think it's a pretty, you know, cost-efficient, easy, easy fix to a potential solution or to a potential problem, rather. So that would be my recommendation, Mark.
Right. I don't think the applicant would have an issue with it at all. I mean, like I say, yeah, right, I agree. It's, it's a it's not an expensive safeguard to put on it. So I think if the board wanted to make that a condition, that would be fine.
So Keith, that silt sack would be in the catch basin. What would we call that on the, the eastern, the southerly side then?
I guess that would be the, the east gutter line of Pleasant Street to add a silt sack. At, and these catch basins aren't numbered, but it'd be the catch basin directly, almost directly opposite the stone tracking pad. So just a, just a single catch basin is, would, would need BMP treatment.
If I look, looking up on the, the map of that area, across the street is, is a large, a large wetland that runs, I don't know, maybe almost the length of the property. So something to consider if you're, if you just assume it all will go into the catch basin or if something larger would be needed.
Say that again, Dan?
Oh, so I just pulled up the, the, the area map and I was just looking across the street at 86 and 88 Pleasant Street. And right after that, that catch basin is, is, is wetlands, right? So I guess the assumption is going to, it's going to go into the catch basin anyways, but that So I guess the assumption is going to go into the catch basin anyways, but it just gives further evidence or reasoning for why we'd want to have something on that side of the street.
The only thing I, the only thing I want to add to the condition for the silt sack is that those need to be regularly maintained by whoever puts those in. So they get clogged up if there is debris. It should be regularly checked to make sure it doesn't clog up and create ponding or other issues.
Is that catch basin going to be on town property or is that going to be on the applicant's site?
No, it's on town property. It's within the right of way on the east side of Pleasant Street.
All right. So you can write a condition in there to have someone maintain that even on town property?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Mark, I'm assuming Heritage would be preparing a, filing a NFTs permit for this as well?
Yep. Yes.
Yeah. So that would, any maintenance of BMPs or best management practices, which best management practices are the silt fence, the erosion control barriers, the silt sack that I'm talking about in this catch basin, all of that, in accordance with the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan is part of kind of a weekly inspection. Or it's based on rain event. You know, if you have X amount inch rain event, you have to inspect all these erosion control measures. So that would certainly be part of the SWIP plan.
So do we have to, under condition on that, specify the a cleaning schedule or maintenance plan yearly, monthly, six months?
It's really up to the applicant as part of their SWIP plan to ensure that not only just, not only that silt sack, but all erosion control measures while the project is in a unstabilized condition, that all erosion control measures are inspected, maintained, and/or replaced as needed. So really, what should be happening is that should be inspected, you know, probably on a weekly, maybe a bi-weekly basis, Paul. So, and that would just fall under the stormwater management plan. Mark, I don't know if you want to add to that or correct anything I may have missed.
No, you're right. Part of the stormwater management plan, the SWIP filing and so forth would detail that.
That SWIP plan, Mark, that SWIP plan goes to the highway or you consult with Randall on that?
It's more of a EPA filing and standard that Randall is used to seeing in most larger projects. I mean, you had one for probably Quigley Estate and others that have been before you. We had one for Woodmar Estates, which was all part of that process.
And Nicholas down the street.
Yeah, and Nicholas down the street. You're right, Paul.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the public?
Nope.
Do we have all the information we need to close this public hearing and act on it?
I believe so. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Cindy got it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now that we have closed the public hearing, does someone want to make a motion to accept the residential stormwater permit for Fred Milkie at 89 Pleasant Street?
I'm going to make a motion to, for this board to accept the stormwater permit with the condition that the, that the plan be updated to include a silt sack at the catch basin diagonally across the street from the anti-tracking pad, as we've just discussed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Keith, seconded by Dan. Any other further discussion?
I have none.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, Mark. Thank you for your presentation. I'll get that decision off to you in a day or two and.
All right. Thank you. Good night, all.
And you're going to stop sharing now?
Yes, I should be already stopped sharing, right?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to sign off.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Why has it got me back on there? Okay. Our next public hearing is now for another residential stormwater permit application. And this is, the applicant is Gregory Felton at 34 High Street. I want to correct myself, too, that I sometimes in this publicity, I did 32 and sometimes I did 34, but it is 34. And I would like to let the public know that we had two informal meetings conducted on October 13th and 20th for a site visit, where we visited the site to inspect the goings on there and the excavating. I will read the public hearing notification that was published also, as the prior one was, October 6th and 13th in the Daily Hampshire Gazette. First he right given with the provision of Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, Planning Board will conduct a public hearing Wednesday, October 21st, 7:00 PM, on the application for residential stormwater permit submitted by Gregory Felton at 34 High Street, map 23, parcel 7. This is in conformance of the zoning bylaw regulation 14. Details requested contacted Southampton Planning Board at gmail.com. Hearing will be televised by East Hampton Media Channel 191. And again, it was published October 6th and 13th. And before I have Mr. Felton present his case here, the abutters list was provided. The check for the permit was provided. The abutters list consisted of 24 abutters, of which I personally mailed them from the envelopes he provided me. Also in the application packet is Form 12 from the Commonwealth of Mass for percolation test for that parcel. Also Form 11 with a soil suitability assessment for onsite sewage disposal. And WPA Form 2, determination of applicability from the Mass DEP. And also the trench permit that was issued by the Highway Superintendent for that location. Date issued of 12/10/18. And also permit to open a public way to work within the public right of way. That was issued on the same date by the Highway Superintendent. And the application now. Some of the forms I'm going to be bringing up, which were provided, one of the main forms that I took a picture of because it was not available on PDF because of the freehand design of the architect, his engineer in East Hampton. So that was taken and I sent that to you today, but again, I'll bring it up on the screen. So, but first of all, I'd like to have Mr. Felton, and if his excavator is on hand tonight, I don't know that he is, but last night when Paul Fergala and I met at the site, Mr. Felton and his excavation engineer was there. Janet was there as a butter. And I'd like to apologize for the communication gap from the week before where Keith Locke, Cindy Palmer, Dan LaVelli, I think John Martin was there, and Marla Hank, some other people were on site. I apologize for the mix-up there. So some of us were there and some of us were not. However, we've all covered the site. I took some pictures. And I think it's important now to ask Mr. Felton to give us some background because having him not there a week ago when three of the board members were there is unfortunate, but I'd like him to give you a background of the site because the roadway in particular was constructed several years ago. So I'm going to ask at this time Greg Felton to give us a brief history of what took place prior to you purchasing the site from, was it the Dodds at 32 High Street?
It was the Dodds at 34 High Street, the partial 32 High Street.
All right. So if you could start your rendition right now, we'd appreciate it.
Paul, this is Cindy. Before he starts, in terms of being a public hearing, should we see his face on this? Or can he just do this with his name only? We're on Zoom meeting.
I don't have an objection to it unless someone else does.
Well, I know that Select Board makes a point of saying people need to be visually available for Zoom meetings.
I don't think we've made that policy at this point.
Okay.
I can turn it on.
I don't care.
Are you available to turn that on, Greg?
Let's see what it looks like. It might be dark because I'm sitting in my vehicle, my office. It's on.
Can you move the camera so we can see your face?
There we go.
There you go.
There we go. There we go. Where are you? Oh, there you are. Okay.
And you can go ahead. And in the meantime, I'm going to try to get a map up here.
Okay. I purchased the parcel from the Dodds almost two years ago now, with the intention of building a residential home with a view. That was the intention to do. And the reason that I thought it was possible to do that is because of the existing drive that was there, that was there from some 30 or 40 years ago, when that was all cleared. And there was, at the time, when I purchased it, a lot of fallen down fence stakes along with barbed wire fence up there. It was pasture, all across the top that was, that was open. That was all open land in the days that the farm was across the street. That information came from Pam and Jess. The previous owners to them were the Allens, and I don't, I've never met them. I know the Allen family is there, around there, but I've never met any of them. But the existing drive is what was the key to being able to be able to build there. And we got permission to do that through the Conservation Committee and Stockman Associates presented the plan to be able to go forward with that. That's pretty much what I've got.
Everybody see a plan that I've got up there?
No, sir.
Nope, not yet.
Here we go again. Not yet?
Nope.
Anything?
Nope. So Paul, my experience is you have to minimize Zoom. You have to go back into your document, open it, save it like on the bottom of your screen as an open document, and then go back. Does anybody have another idea on that one? Zoom experts, you?
So I minimize Zoom.
Yep. Go into your document, open it. And then go back. As the screen's here.
I was just looking up the property on Google Earth over the past, from 1997 until now, to see if it was ever open land. It might be interesting for the group to see this.
Frustrating.
Did you open Zoom again, Paul? Did you open Zoom again, Paul?
Oh, I don't know what I'm doing to be honest with you.
Paul, if you want to send me the file, I could present it. Just offer.
I think I'm trying to down- do you have it Dan? It's right here. I think it's downloaded right.
I actually don't know which file he wants to display.
The clearing plan? Is that what we're looking for? Cause I, I just downloaded it. I don't know if I can save it in.
Yeah, maybe offer Paul since he's back.
Yeah, I'm trying to uh, I'm trying to find out. I can't even get back to video here for some reason or other.
Well, we, we had an offer for you. We might be able to present it for you.
Alright, here I go now.
Okay, great.
Um, what do you? Somebody else want to grab it from their end? I don't know.
You want to do that, Dan?
I, I just need to know which file we're looking to.
Is it the Sierra Ruta clearing plan? Is that what we're looking for?
Well, that's one of them. You can start with that.
Do you have that, Dan?
I don't have it loaded on my computer, so if you have it, go for it.
I'm trying right now. Okay, so um, does, you want to give me share file option?
Anybody see that? No? Geez, I'm pulling it up and I can't seem to get it with you guys. Uh, what do you want to do Cindy?
Can you give me the share file option?
Screen share?
Yeah.
Multiple, multiple participants? Go ahead.
Let me try. Is that it, you guys?
Yep.
Alright, um. This is what we want?
That's it to start with, yes.
Okay, that's, that's the only one I, I downloaded right now, but um, so there's High Street up here, right?
Alright, so.
Go ahead, you talk.
Greg, is, is Brendan with you tonight?
Yes, he is, Paul.
Alright, so as we discussed last night, can you, can you give us some information about what was existing there on the property versus what you've done since then?
Alright, good evening board, how are you?
This is Brendan, the last name?
Monahan.
Monahan.
Uh, the existing road is, the existing road that was there has approximately four to five inches of hard packed non-pervious soil on it. When you come up right to the top of the plan, you'll see where the road takes to the left right by the culvert there. That's where it stopped. We stopped where the existing road was.
Right here?
Uh, you gotta go a little to your right, I guess it would be, if Greg can show you. Show me where the road is, Greg, can you? Um, you'll see where the existing culvert was if you come from the road up.
So this is the road, my arrow's going?
Yep, follow, go towards, right towards, you gotta go more, take your arrow more towards um, the left of the. Towards North Hampton, right there, yep, right there. That is where, you see the existing road drawn in, that, that road is why he bought the lot. And that existing road stopped right where your arrow is. See where that culvert is? That is where the existing road stopped. Right there. So from, from there, if you take your arrow and go back to Westfield, all the way to the property line.
Yep.
And then keep coming, okay? And then go down to the bottom of the driveway as, as your arrow goes back down towards High Street.
This way?
Yep, where you see that, all we did there was take the trees and the shrubber and the brush out, which we had permission to do from the conservation, so we could build a house site with a view. That was normal, normal typical construction for a new home. If you take your arrow and go back up to that culvert, um, keep coming up, yeah, right there.
Yep.
And now you look to the right, we have a disturbed area there, which we definitely disturbed and let me grab a piece of paper. You guys have the file, but I'm gonna read you the sizes and um, did you send that to him tonight Greg? I did. Paul Frugal has um, some copies of what I did today. Can I see those? Uh, is the third page of that documentation?
So Cindy, that's on the email I sent out to uh, to everyone just a minute ago.
Do you want, do you want me to open that up?
Yeah.
It's gonna take me a minute. I'll do my best.
You got this Cindy, you got this.
I, I got it. I know, I saw it in my email. So I gotta.
No, 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 I mean, you got the.
Yeah, she's got it and I resign.
Don't do that, Paul.
No, Paul, no, no, no. Wait a sec, I'm backing off. So Paul Fergal, what am I supposed to do now? Paul, Fergal?
Uh, open up the uh, email I sent. Has a bunch of photos.
Alright, so I gotta minimize, hold on.
So last, so yesterday when we were there, we asked for him to um, identify the area of disturbance that they uh, basically to disturb as part of, you know, work on, on, on his property. And I got a, I got that and I forwarded off to the um, board. So that's in that email that I sent.
Okay, well, before we go further, I gotta tell you, my uh, Yahoo mail just collapsed. I don't know if I overtext it or what, but I can't open my email on my laptop right now, sorry. Somebody else will have to do that. Maybe, maybe Dan, can you do that?
Yeah, I just have to download the files.
Yep, sorry.
It's all good.
Dan, do you have a copy of the three pages we sent you this afternoon?
I think in order for me, me to be able to share, uh, you would have to stop your sharing.
Alright, I'll do my best.
We got this, right?
Maybe we do and maybe we don't. Oh, here we go, stop, share. Okay, I've stopped.
So now I can share this screen.
By the way, Paul, I did get your email.
And now we're gonna open up the planning board folder. Uh, it's probably, I think it's, this is one of the files? Does that look like one of the files?
That's the one I'd like to, that's the one I'd like to, that's the one that Paul Figaro and I talked about last night, is what I'd like to discuss with, yes.
Okay, it looks like there's a, let me just, yeah, okay, so go ahead and start talking about that and then download the other ones while you're.
No, that's probably the one we need to talk about first, Dan.
Oh, okay, great.
Come in from High Street, come up the driveway, you see the existing driveway, you got it spun on our screen. I don't know how it looks on your screen, follow that. So start on High Street and follow the driveway. You've walked that property numerous times. So as your arrow is right now, keep coming up, keep coming up, keep coming up, stop right there. That's the culvert that we replaced. You were there when I met you, right there.
Yep.
Alright Dan, so that property we measured it last night, you can read the measurement, adds sixteen thousand eighty-one square feet of disturbed area. We measured that last night on the site. We took out the existing wood road of two hundred and seventy-seven by twelve, which was three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four square feet. That is the only property that we disturbed that does not have anything to do with a conventional building site. And you were there as well when I met you um, back quite a long time. Um, that is your measurements that we took last night and they're legitimate measurements. That's as you walked across that culvert. And Paul, that's what you asked me to sign on for you last night and measure out for you?
Yeah, so uh, Dan, move over, move over to the next uh, two photos.
There's two more to go with it. Alright, so the whole board, this is, is it okay for me to speak or would you guys like to ask questions?
Go ahead.
This is, Paul, this goes to you, Figaro. This is, there's thirty-one loads of fill stockpiled on that site on top of hill, um, on top of the existing grades which Bill Schruder or William Schruder out of Leverett, Mass drew, uh, PE engineer. There's thirty-one loads of fill sitting on top of that fill for the septic system, which is five hundred and twenty-seven yards. There's six hundred and nine yards required for the fill for the septic system that was approved by the planning, uh, by the uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, the Board of Health. And we were just stockpiling there because we had a permit to put in the septic adjacent to the house, which the plan has been approved by the town of Health. Uh, town, your town. That material is sitting on the existing grades, which the plan you have from William Schruder is, shows you all existing grades on that lot.
Would you like to see the next picture?
Yep. I handwrote this because we didn't have less than twenty-four hours, but I'll give you, would you like me to give you a brief rundown or do you like to read it and you figure it out?
Keep, go ahead.
Well, let's reference you as a planning board. Total square foot is disturbed, forty-seven thousand five hundred square feet. Um, existing wood roads, as you can see, is three thousand three hundred and twenty-four square feet. And then we got the existing driveway is six thousand three hundred square feet, so we're down to like thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-six square feet. Or nine hundred and fifty-six. I apologize, Greg picked me up and I don't have my glasses. So I'm getting a little older. Then if you roll it up a little bit, I just gave you the explanation about the amount of material that was sitting on top of the original grade, because that was a um, not an issue, it was just brought up as being disturbed soil. We were just stockpiling material because we had a permit to do um, you know, install assesses, install a septic system before we received a cease and desist. So that was my explanation to why that fill was stockpiled on top um, of the original grade. So I guess that's a, in a handful, that's what I got for you.
So I, I, I'm just not certain I understand whomever said, this used to be a cleared lot way back when. Why is that relevant? Why is that relevant?
Well, Paul asked for some history on the, on the, on the lot. That was, that was back some forty, fifty years ago that was, that it was cleared. He just asked for some history on it and the driveway, that's why that driveway was there to get up to that farmland and to the cabin that was there and which a woman that was a nurse at the hospital at Cooley Dickinson lived there until the early eighties. In the cabin up there, there was electricity and uh, what kind of what you call a makeshift septic system and water. There was a well down in the back with pump in it. And uh, she crossed over that old culvert that was there and into the cabin. My cabinet shows a cabin on one of the prints.
I think the point Cindy, I was trying to make on his explanation was that that road was many, many years ago. It um, it was not part of some of the reclamation that's been done up there since. So um, we may have to consider, you know, in our deliberations here, um, that that preceded any, any stormwater management a long time ago.
Um, somebody's gonna have to tell me why that matters. I mean, there's two kinds of old roads. There's discontinued roads which are owned by the town but not maintained. And then there's abandoned roads that are reverted to the property owners on either side of the road. I mean, if it's thirty, forty years ago and now it's a fully treated lot, granted it's not treated at this point, someone has to explain to me why that matters.
I think we're getting wrapped up on the, on the road. I don't think that's, that's the, that's the big discussion point. The big discussion point is the, is the site and the clearing and the numbers that we have here are indicating that the values exceed one, one acre.
Yep.
Um, so not to get hung up on the road discussion. I don't think that brings any, any uh, further clarification on where we're going with this, but the way I see that is, is, you know, the, in terms of where this site falls and how it, it meets our um, stormwater regulations, it exceeds, the amount of clearance exceeds what we would have um, for a, a, a one acre site. So, point being is, it's, 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 you know, something that we would be reviewing like the earlier project or the uh, Woodmar, not the Woodmar, what was that site? The first site, Unpleasant. Basically, similar to that site where it had over an acre of disturbance, they identified um, site features that that included the, the wattles and subsequent uh, um, silt, silt sock that was put in the catch basin as part of their mitigation measures for the site.
Keith, uh, what were your observations when you went up?
Yeah, so we, we were there last Tuesday after relatively intense amount of rain. Um, my observations were there, there appeared, in my opinion, there appeared to be sedimentation coming out of that driveway accumulating in the gutter line, in the curb line on High Street. Um, you know, it, it's like, like the applicant had indicated, it's, it's a, it's a hard packed driveway. But there, I did notice migration of fines coming out of that driveway into High Street. Um, it's pretty obvious that pretty much that entire lot slopes down towards High Street, so I, I think if there was ever a case that we need at least some form of erosion controls on, on a project, this is one. Um, you know, the disturbance seemed to be greater than forty thousand square feet. There was a lot of unstabilized gravelly soils. Um, but having that rain event made it pretty obvious that there was material leaving the site and entering the public way.
Hey, Keith, can I pipe in for one second? Brendan Monahan? That lot, that driveway that you looked at, we put in exactly almost a year ago and we never got to address any type of drainage. We got a system. And that's been twelve months of nobody using it, nobody doing anything to it at all. Obviously, when it's finished, it'll be an impervious soil with the proper drainage, you know what I mean? That's one year with nobody touching it, what you saw the other day when it was raining, twelve months.
The drainage.
That's been one year with no excavation there.
Yeah, so I mean, point in case, it's been a, an inactive site and there was still material coming off of it.
Yeah, I just want to let you know that we didn't touch it for a year and it held up pretty good for a year for not. And that was just roughed in just to get up there and start, you know what I mean Keith?
Yep.
If there's any type of regulations or stipulations, the driveway will be an impervious soil with the proper drainage. It needs to be tilted towards the existing culvert, you know what I mean? Obviously, you don't dump the water on a town byway for ice and safety reasons, but we were told that we could just stop everything we were doing. So that's how it got left a year ago Keith.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that makes, that makes sense. You guys haven't had a chance to address.
We weren't allowed to, we didn't touch it for twelve months because we were told not to. I mean.
Sure, yep, no, you were told to cease and desist. Yeah, e- even if you had gone there to try to do the right thing, it would appear you would have been working on it. So no, I get it, but
They told us not to.
I really think part of the presentation tonight and part of any of the, you know, the plans that were presented should have included, you know, some sort of um, some sort of erosion control. of, some sort of erosion controls to address these issues. Because like, like you said, it's been an inactive site for twelve months and I, you know, it was pretty obvious there was material coming off that driveway. So what's going to happen?
Just vines washing down, absolutely. I agree with you a hundred percent. I just, we just met last night about five o'clock. I actually was late, so I apologize, five fifteen. So we didn't have any time to really get any paperwork, but as far as the driveway, that will be blacktop when the house is done and the drains will be the way it should be. But as far as if you want to plan for that, I'm all game for it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I mean, we, we really, we really have to, I don't know if you're part of the, the prior presentation, I mean, that was a relatively flat lot. They actually sloped away from the roadway, but you know, the applicant through their engineer had designed, and it's pretty basic stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah, we do it all the time.
Sediment logs, you know, just to protect and prevent siltation and migration. So that's, I mean, my, my opinion, that's what I'd be looking for in something like this in order to, you know, to make a, to make an action on this, on this permit. So.
But that's exactly also Keith.
I wasn't, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't there last night. I'm just trying to understand, what is, what is the board's opinion, what is the applicant's opinion on the current total disturbed area? So it would be area that is not stabilized either through some type of impervious soil, riprap endor, grass. What is the total disturbed area?
Thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-two square feet, but we planted, that's okay, we got one of those. We never even got to plant grass on the part as you drove into the left of the driveway, Keith, that was all set and loamed, that's the original grade, we were going to seed it, and they told us to cease and desist. We were going to have straw below it, it would have been, if we had one or two more days, it would be all mowed lawn and there wouldn't have been any runoff, but when you got a cease and desist, they tell you to stop, we stopped. It was all, that whole hill was graded and ready to be seeded at the time. So you got just about thirty-eight thousand square feet.
Okay.
You have a paper, it's all my handwriting, I apologize, we didn't have time to put it together on a computer sheet, but you can check it out on your screen there.
So is that, is that on the, say, what you're calling the Westfield side of the culvert, not counting this?
Actually, Dan, that's the side taken, if you look at my measurements, if you go back a page, we went out and measured it last night. You go back a page, it's hand drawn in, unfortunately, I'm sorry. There is, the measurements are on, if you, if you guys click up a page back, we handwrote it in last night when we were there, looking at the lot. And that's one where existed, we took the existing wood road out, we took out the part on the right side of the culvert, Dan. Go back one more page, I want to see the regular page where the math was. Okay, so if you look to the right of the culvert, Dan, you were there, you'll see where that clearing was, that we went up to the existing grade where the original perk test was, which equals.
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand and some square feet minus the woods road. If you follow your arrow all the way up from High Street, coming up the existing driveway like you're walking from the bottom of the hill, okay, keep coming up, keep coming up. And then you cross that culvert right there, Dan, where you and I had met that day, that's the part where we disturbed right there, that's the sixteen thousand square feet. That is the only part that we disturbed that was not a part of the original conservation sign-off, is sixteen thousand square feet. Anything to the left of that road, we were approved to clear for a building lot, obviously bought a house with a view, and that's what he was doing was just making it so you could see, you know what I mean?
In the parcel where the house is going to be, that is thirty-one thousand five hundred total.
Yeah, all the math on that sheet, kind of hand drawn, I apologize.
So wouldn't it be thirty-seven thousand plus sixteen thousand?
No, add them all together.
Thirty-one thousand.
Again.
Plus, okay.
Plus the sixteen, then go to the math page and you deduct driveway, deduct the wood road that was existing there.
It starts on top, Dan, going from the reference, start on top, forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty, okay, and you can read the rest, deduct it from the back, the existing, what was there. And Paul Diamond, we had talked about this last night from the existing road and the existing driveways where we got these numbers from, we didn't elaborate on them, we just measured them with a wheel.
Dan, I'm going to share my screen for a second.
Yes, hang on.
Or tab two here. Can you guys see what appears to be an aerial image of the site?
Go ahead, yes.
All right.
Keith, is that you on the screen right there?
Yeah.
Okay, so follow the existing, see the hard-packed road where your hand is right now?
Yep.
Yep, that road was there, keep going. Okay, now, right there, stop right there. The only area we disturbed that was not, these two piles are brush, to the area to the right where you're looking right now, that is the area that I measured, it's sixteen thousand square feet, that's the area that we disturbed, legitimately disturbed right there.
All right, well, this is, let me just take a measurement here, and then we can talk about this, but this is what I'm seeing for, you know, an area of disturbance.
Yeah, and we measured with a wheel last night, so our error is probably not. You asked us to ask what we took, you're in the trees there.
In the trees and the stuff way back here.
That's all existing grade. See this, Keith, all the way, that is all existing grade.
That's way bigger than what.
Yeah, it's way bigger if you go up there and what you measured.
But this is an image from last.
I know exactly where it's from, I used it myself.
Yeah, it's an image from last September, right? So what, what has, what has been reestablished since last September?
It's all lawn, the only thing in the middle is what's grown, right in the middle. If you take your arrow, go to the left, you see where Greg's camper is right there? That dark area is the only area disturbed. The part you see is straw where we planted grass. See the dark area in the middle? You see his camper parked right there? Now look at the dark area in the middle, that's the gravel area. What you're looking at, the white stuff is all straw, and see the silt fence in place? That's the original agreement. So if you come back down the road now, towards your left, see the silt fence? Right where you are to the right, that's silt fence. And this is all lawn that we planted just to make it look nice. That's all straw right there. And go behind the camper, that real bright white area is all straw. We blew it a straw blower.
That's where the cabin was, right behind where the camper is.
And those two piles are wood chips. Okay, those two piles are wood chips where your arrow is, that are still there, undisturbed.
So this area is straw?
That's all grass, yes, that's all grass.
Grass at this point.
That's blown from my straw blower, just to put a lawn in, which is maintain in mode. And then if you go to the left side of the driveway, you can see that straw, the bright area is all straw, just for erosion control, and yep, now you got it.
All right, so this is all stabilized at this point?
Yes, that's what I drew out on that little piece of paper, you see how it's like a dogleg area by the camper? That's what I measured last night.
And that's what you see on the paper, it matches what that dark area is.
That's why that dogleg is on my drawing, Keith.
Okay.
And if you go all the way, Keith, follow, follow heading towards North Hampton from your yellow. Right, you'll see the top of the hill, that's all existing grade. Yep, right there.
Right.
That's all existing, that's all existing grade. You can see it right there, that's a knob sticking up. If you're up there, you saw that gravel knob?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. That's all existing grade. Everything there is existing. We didn't touch any of that.
Where it's, where it's even darker, that's, that's the loam.
That's the loam on the backside, yeah, that's where the logging road went down through.
You can see that's the original brown loam right there.
So if you look at that page, what I measured, that goofy-looking drawing that I drew, it looks exactly what your gravel looks like where the camper is. So your arrow falls around to where the camper is to the right, back up towards the grade and over and back. That is what I gave you the exact measurement on, and I drew his camper in there on that page. I took that.
Let me try this, I'm looking at kind of both things at once here, I'm looking at your drawing.
Yeah, it looks just like, it looks just like that goofy shape of the dogleg in, where the little, behind the camper is. Yep, right where you are, that's all, keep right there, yep. So follow that dark line, yep, just like you are, keep going, yep, keep going, keep going. Now veer left a little bit.
Go straight.
Okay, now follow the straw line all the way back down. Yep, right to the culvert, right there, now come back to your right. Yep, and you got to take out this straw, because you got to follow that, see the silt fence around there, Keith? Go right back to the camper.
Yeah.
Yep, go right behind the camper. That's how I measured it last night, and see how close we are. I came up with sixteen, I came up with sixteen thousand eighty-one square feet with a wheel, maybe I'm wrong compared to your computer, but.
I'm trying to look at your hand drawing here.
Yeah, you see it on the top right? Two oh one by seventy-two, I believe it was, Keith? I know it's pretty bad writing, but I apologize.
Yeah. Yeah, let's see here, approximately two oh one by seventy-two, okay.
Yeah, and on the other end by the culvert, it might have been a little wider, I think it was seventy-seven, if I remember right, but it's hard to do it when you're doing it with a wheel, I didn't have any instruments with me, I apologize.
So, I mean, two oh one by seventy-two.
Should come out to like sixteen thousand eighty-one square feet, right, roughly?
Well, I mean, to be exact, two oh one times seventy-two is fourteen thousand four seventy-two.
Well, I was generous on it, because I was adding in for the elbow, what did you come up on your computer?
Um, I'm, it's only sixty-eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, well, I did it as, I did it as a square because I didn't have the option you had last night, I wasn't even in my pickup, so. But that is the, if you go up there, that is the exact disturbed area where you just circled around. You're more than welcome to walk up there.
Yeah, so, so at the end of the day, we, we have a disturbed area that is somewhere over here.
That's exactly, the dark area is still there, that's the area.
We have a disturbed area that's over here.
Yeah, and this is a residential house site, this is all pre-approved. From this, from the right side of the driveway, starting on the bottom where that wood chip is, all the way up to that silt fence was pre-approved, and she knew we were, everybody knew he was building a house here.
Wait, 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 that doesn't matter. What matters is that you've exceeded forty thousand square, I don't care who pre-approved it, you clearly got a cease and desist.
Will you add the square footage up on the left side of the driveway with your computer and see what you come up with? You have a better instrument than we have.
Can I, can I ask a question here just a minute? When you say pre-approved, if this was pre-approved for building, was a building permit pulled?
It was ready to be issued, but they pulled it back from the conservation. Correct, Greg, or no?
Yeah, but, but all this, but all this reclamation and excavating happened prior to, to pulling of that, and the, the bylaw states that you're not supposed to do any disturbance until the plan is given to the building inspector about what the, you know, the future plans are for the property before anything is disturbed, and that doesn't appear to have happened.
Maybe I misunderstood that then. We assumed that once the conservation was signed off, we were all set to go, so I guess Paul didn't.
We were told we could start to do work.
That's not the way we took it, so I guess I'm wrong.
But who, who authorized that?
The Conservation Commission, Metis.
The Conservation Commission has nothing to do with it, the zoning enforcement officer is the building inspector.
Um, the building permit, was it ever issued yet?
No.
No, because they put a cease and desist on it, right?
The Conservation Commission can't issue a building permit.
I know that, Paul, I've been doing this for thirty-two years, and the permit was all set to be issued, and that's when that disturbed area was on the wrong side of the silt fence, which we all admitted was wrong, and that's where I'm going with this, and we told you we disturbed that area across the way there. And the conservation, that's been addressed with the box culvert design, as far as that goes, that plans, they've, they've all, that's been all submitted, right?
It's submitted.
I was telling you that that other side of that, where we disturbed it, we shouldn't have, is what I was, and I told the Conservation Commission that. As far as the square footage goes, you can add it up on your computer and see what you come up with.
Well, so let me, let me try to bring up your, just so I'm.
What do you get on the left side of the driveway, Keith?
Um, yeah, well, how far? I'm trying to match what you've, what you've drawn here.
Keith, I drew it all the way from the bottom, right where the, see where the bottom from the driveway, just like you got it? Keep going.
Shade the tree.
Right by the shade of the tree. Yep, come up a little bit, just up, right there, to the left, to the left, all, that thing I measured from there, all the way around the driveway, over to the top, I squared it off though, because I don't have the instruments you had, that's where I came up with the next number. This whole left side area that's all loamed, that's just existing loam. That, follow the driveway all the way around, now take a left and come back down, see what you come up with.
Is this area right here, is this unstabilized?
We never got to plant grass on it, it's just natural vegetation. This is all stabilized, but the left of the driveway is not, because we had a cease and desist before we could get to seeding it.
Yes, you saw, it was just weedy vegetation.
The only thing I had to do, Keith, is just take the driveway out, because this thing, move your line over to the left.
It doesn't matter if it's existing.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not really existing, right? Because that driveway was put in, this is from two thousand eighteen, right? No driveway.
It's up through the woods there, it's a fully wooded.
I don't know what the driveway is.
Followed your line right up there, it's just because there's trees over.
This area alone is forty-seven thousand square feet.
Yeah, but you're all the way in the tree line, you got to come way back out of that tree line, we're nowhere near that tree line, take it back off this tree line, fall.
Well, I don't know, I'm looking at an image that shows like it's clearly disturbed, you know.
Well, if the trees are there, that's not disturbed, but you do what you want to do, it's fine, I'm not, I'm not going to hear the argument.
You got more there.
And you have the driveway, you have the whole driveway, the driveway consists of, the driveway consists of, which is on the original town plan, which you have in front of you, consists of on the sheet, just for the driveway alone, consists of sixty-three hundred square feet, and the driveway is on the original plan, which you have in front of you.
And you're down here by the road, you need to come.
I think you're missing the point of original, existing, we don't really care about what was originally existing. It, it's not the permanent driveway, it's clearly causing sedimentation into the roadway, it needs to be considered in the area of disturbance. So you, you can't deduct the, you can't deduct the driveway that's causing sedimentation into the town right away as part of an area that's disturbed. It, it's, it's clearly part of the disturbed area. So, I mean, based on the information that's presented, it, it's, I mean, I hate to say this, guys, but this is really a lackluster submission, it, it's missing any sort of erosion controls. I make a motion to continue this hearing, I, I think there needs to be a little bit more information presented, you know, in a little more cleaner, professional manner, I, I just, there's too much misinformation on this. I have no clue, no confidence in terms of what the actual current disturbance is, what any future disturbances are in order to finish this project. So to me, I firmly believe, right now out there, if we really went out and measured it, we'd be over forty thousand square foot of disturbance. So I'm not in a position to act on this, other than to continue this hearing.
No, I hear you, and, and I want to, I want to say that the bylaw, section, you know, fourteen, especially paragraphs or, or sections G and H, were not addressed fully when it comes to the measures to be taken, when it comes to existing and proposed utilities, site existing and proposed topography with contours and intervals, the, the hydrology showing flows, the only, the only plan I saw that had a, a hydrology or flow of any sort was the septic plan, which I sent to all you guys, but it only had that part of the septic area around where the house was. And there's, there's several, there's several areas where the, the application was incomplete that we, that we need, we require. And, and I also noticed going up the road, which was hard not to notice, was the ditch, you can call it, there's some riprap, and there isn't much riprap there, there's probably more rock and whatever, but those areas have got to be shored up, and a plan and a drawing of some sort has got to be submitted showing what, what the measures are going to be going forward to prevent, as Keith said upfront, how you're going to control any water outflow going into High Street. So there's, there's several areas of the bylaw that weren't addressed that, that need to be, and we continue this hearing, hopefully you can, you can have that information for us, so, so we can proceed. Dan or Paul, any other further questions, or Cindy, or comments?
I, I agree with what you said, I think more information is needed.
Hey, I got one comment for Keith.
Yep.
Hey, and I do appreciate it, but we were notified, I, I only got out there five o'clock, five o'clock last night, and I appreciate your comments and your help, and I agree with you, but there was no time to make anything else but a handwritten note, so I wasn't trying to be unprofessional. So just give them a list of what you need, and we'll take care of it, fair enough.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's.
No, I just, you can't do anything in less than twenty-four, it's been twenty-seven hours since we were there, and there's no way to do that. So I agree with you as far as that goes, I agree with you, but there was no time for any type of formal documentation, or I wouldn't do something on a handwritten thing, I'd have my engineer draw it, but I just wanted to agree with you and say thank you, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, that's fine, and that's why.
I actually wanted to make this meeting postponed for a month and just get our stuff together, but thought it'd be better just to say hi and talk to you, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, that's fine, I hear you, and that's why.
Wasn't trying to do anything that wasn't supposed to be in line, but there was not time for, you're not going to contact the engineer and have him draw a plan in twenty-seven hours.
Brendan, if, if I might interject, if, if Mr. Felton, Greg, if you were there and you read the, you read the bylaw and the criteria that was required to go forward this, that was required to go forward this, and I understand, you know, you wanted to go it your own because the, the expense of hiring uh, a professional agency to do this is, is understandable because it is expensive, but you, you decided to go this on your own and the, the information is, is very incomplete because you, you decided to go this route. So it's not something, Brendan, that, you know, you're sorry you couldn't produce it in twenty-four hours. This application was filed now only over four weeks ago, so the application was incomplete when it was filed.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
I do have a question. I didn't, I didn't hear the answer to the question, I think Paul Demon, that you raised, which was, did they get a permit? He, he said he got approval from the Conservation Commission. Was there ever a completion of the permit application?
Which, what permit?
There, there was no building permit.
So there was no building permit. There should have been. Is this correct? Am I correct? Was there, should there have been a building permit? Before they started work?
Prior to clearing, you can't clear, you can't clear a lot without a building permit?
Usually when you have your conservation sign, if you're all set to start clearing, that's how that usually works in every other town surrounding.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I mean, to me, my understanding is you need a, you need a building permit in order to at least commence foundation construction.
Correct, correct.
Allowed to clear, you're allowed to stump, grub. If you go over an acre, that triggers a SWIP permit. If, in the town of Southampton, if you go over forty thousand square feet of clearing, that triggers a stormwater permit, but, um, you know, I, I, I think, you know, I think they were, they were, they were fined to at least commence with what they did other than once they exceeded the forty thousand square feet, but it sounds like they had, you know, conservation approval, but.
That's not exactly accurate. We had issued a permit for a request for determination of applicability and what had been permitted, they exceeded what had been permitted, so we have an enforcement order out there to do replanting as well as plans.
Yeah, okay.
That's correct.
Thank you, Marla.
Does the applicant understand what they need to provide for the continuation of the hearing?
I need to spend fifteen thousand dollars to hire somebody to come drop a fancy plan to make it look really pretty.
I did not, I did not, I did not say that. I said, I said that I understand your reason for not spending that money, but if you wanted to go about it on your own, you at least have to address the criteria that's required. And there's, there's no measurements for, uh, for showing any, how you're gonna manage any of the runoff coming off of the road, number one. And that's probably the greatest one. And I believe the, the highway superintendent, that was his greatest concern.
It's not finished. Pretty simple. The driveway permit shows where the culverts are there and whatnot.
But you, you don't have it on a plan showing what you're going to do to exacerbate it.
It's on the driveway plan. Shows the two culverts going across the road, across the driveway, which are not finished. And the reason.
Then, then what we have to, then what we have to see is a plan showing what you are proposing to do to mitigate that so we can see it in black and white so we can approve it and then it can go be, uh, go out and be inspected after the fact.
It's in the driveway plan, but that's not completed yet because we had to stop.
We don't have that, I'm afraid.
The driveway plan you have.
Paul, do you have anything you want to add to this? And can I get any other list of, um, conditions or requests that we need to have from the applicant so we can reconvene this on November fourth?
Is that enough time, November fourth, for what you need? I mean, that's only three weeks.
He's gonna have to, he's gonna have to take and, um, we'll get, we'll get the engineer involved, Paul, and let him do a, you know, a runoff plan, which never even got that point, which is understandable. And I want to reiterate the plan that I was out there last night with you, so don't want to make it look like I was being unprofessional. Um, both you and Paul asked me to draw something up to show you what I did, so I thought I did the right thing. Wasn't trying to slip something by, but, um, no, why don't we just, why don't we just let it be adjacent? And we'll contact you when the plan's done and pre-approve it, pre-submit it, and then we'll go from there. What do you think about that?
Well, the next two meetings, one is on November fourth and the one after that is the eighteenth. How much time do you need to get that together?
Well, Paul, haven't talked to the engineer yet. I'm gonna be real brief with you. Haven't talked to an engineer yet. We just got done with you. I spoke to you less than twenty-four hours ago. I gave you what you asked, so why don't you put us on the agenda for the second meeting? And why don't you give us a list of conditions, what you would like to have from us, and we will propose it and plan it to you on the meeting.
Would, would you, would you like to read the bylaw with Mr. Felton and go through it paragraph by paragraph?
We'll have the engineer do it. I've never read the bylaw.
Then that's, then the engineer is the route to go, I would expect. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I never knew anything about the forty thousand square feet, so I didn't, that's probably just as much of my fault. So, no, just put us on the meeting for the second, the second meeting, not next month, the following month, and we'll come back in with a proper paperwork.
Do we have a motion to continue this to November eighteenth?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Cindy, who was it seconded by?
Keith.
Keith. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting will be continued on November eighteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thanks, Keith.
Um. My apologies for not getting maps up, but I guess you got up what you needed to, and thanks for jumping in Keith and Dan and Paul or whoever else did. I gotta take a course on how to bring these files up, I know that, but Keith, I'm glad you brought that overhead map up. That was very helpful, but, um.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just really confused about what, well, I, I think there's confusion about what disturbance is, so. Um, hopefully they, they come with some good information for the next meeting.
Well, um, like the, the proposed house site, now that was all cleared and grubbed. And then there was, um, Phil, how many loads had Phil put on top of it? That's, that's considered, is that like double disturbance?
No, disturbance is typically just surface area, not necessarily minimal.
Not Phil, no?
Yeah.
Well, it's a little complicated. You gotta look at the, uh, proposed grades where the fill was stacked. My understanding is the fill was put in the area where the, um, septic system was gonna go, so we gotta look at it, uh, you know, holistically, I guess.
Um, okay, moving on, we'll have to, uh, I had a email from the Housing Partnership, or is it called the Southampton Housing Authority? I don't know. Can't remember the gentleman's name, the email, but, uh, they're interested in getting together again to start discussions about changing zoning language for affordable housing. Uh, probably different kind of housings and, and different zoning districts as we go forward, so, um. I'm gonna ask him what's good for them to get on, um, a joint public meeting with us. The, uh, the stormwater that we discussed, the MS four, do you want to do that sooner or later? Now, John, there probably won't be another town meeting until maybe spring, uh, you know, they probably don't, aren't gonna be planning on having anything inside in January, February, are they?
Well, we talked about the need for one in maybe the February area, but we do have the concern about going inside, so we're just, you know, playing it by ear now and see what comes up, but there's a possibility it could be in the winter.
So that's my, uh, pose the question to the board, when you would like to, uh, schedule that public hearing for that MS four? You wanna, you wait until there's probably a definitive date on, um, another special town meeting? Uh, so we can get it to coordinate with that or, or do it and get it out of the way and, and wait?
Well, I propose we, we do it and then if we can answer everything at that one hearing, great. If not, if it needs a continuation, we still have some wiggle room to do a continuation on the public hearing if, if that's what comes up. So I propose we get that public hearing scheduled sooner rather than later.
Everybody in agreement with that? Get that out of the way behind us?
Yeah, if it fits into, uh, an open time for a meeting, if we don't have a lot of other things on the agenda, yes.
Well, I can't, uh, I don't think I've got enough time to schedule it for the first meeting in November, so why don't I shoot for the first meeting in December?
Okay, that's okay.
In that way there, it'll give me time to get the legal posting out, um. And then the Housing Partnership, I gave him our dates that we meet first and third Wednesdays, and I'm waiting to hear back from, from him, um, what might be suitable.
I think he is Jim Seeny. I think that's who you heard.
Yeah, he, he just, I couldn't remember his last name. I just, he just said Jim and I, I remember meeting him a while back when we had those discussions early on, but not recently. Um, I don't have any other business other than a warrant. Cindy, do you have any committee reports or Dan?
Pretty, pretty quick, just to tell everybody to be looking on the town website, hopefully very soon, week or so, to see the posting of the preliminary, not the preliminary, the sort of compilation of the town survey, uh, update of the master plan implementation committee. Um, it's all been prepared, the report, um, and Ed Gibson is hopefully gonna get that posted on the, um, town website. Uh, and the good news is we're very close to finishing the open space and recreation plan. Um, I know, um, Ed also has been working on finalizing that, which is great. And I think that's, let's see if I have something else here. Oh, I'm, I'm now your representative on Community Preservation Committee, and I will say we, I went to one meeting. Any, um, any ideas on anything that CPC should continue for, should consider for funding? I don't know if Planning Board has anything in mind, but anybody who knows of any projects that should be considered for CPC funding can be brought forth. They don't have a lot of projects on their list right now, so, um, that should be considered.
Cindy, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Sorry, just, just a question, just because I was there tonight, and I know at one point it was a relatively large CPC project that was approved, but doesn't seem to have gotten off the ground. Did they talk anything about, uh, furthering the development at Labree Field? And, and John, maybe you know the status of that too. I know there was a several hundred thousand dollar, uh, CPC approval at town meeting, but clearly there's, you know, there hasn't been anything over there. What I had heard was the bids for the facility that was planned came in higher than what was anticipated. So just kinda curious if that money was now retracted and back in CPC coffers? If you know anything about that, Cindy or John?
The, the answer is I don't know. It was not brought up at the CPC meeting, uh, last week, so the answer is I don't know. And I don't, John, you know anything?
I don't know either. I'm not the liaison. No, I'm not the liaison to that, so I'm not aware of where the money is. I would think it's still sitting there, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Um, you can contact Virginia AR to have her put it on the agenda for the next meeting if you think that would be helpful to have it discussed.
Yeah, Mark Reed probably might know the answer too, if he's still.
It's parks, it's parks.
Yeah, so he, he might know if that was, if that's been stalled or, or what the status is, so.
Okay. Okay, and Open Space Committee, we're very busy. We're looking at, um, you know, trying to understand what kind of, um, properties would be useful to consider for conservation, how to work with landowners who might need information on considering conservation of their lands. And, um, Mark Wamsley from Kestrel Land Trust is standing by to be as supportive and helpful as he can. And the good news is we now have a Friends of Open, of Southampton Open Space, which of course is a non-town committee. It's outside of our town, but it's a, a new Friends Committee that has formed. They've become a five oh one C three. They have a logo, they have a website, um, and they're looking to, um, invite people to be supportive to that if they can and, um, fundraising, involvement in volunteering. Um, the, the Mass Trails Grant got approved, which is state money that had to be released by the federal government, and that's all taken place. They're gonna go out for bids on that for, um, for, um, fixing up the property at Manhand Meadows that got so badly damaged by the microburst in two thousand nineteen. So that's all coming together with volunteers working on that, hopefully on that too. So there's a lot happening. That's it.
I should report that I attended and represented us at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's, uh, meeting. You know, it's my first meeting, uh, first I'm going to this, um, so I kind of was just taking it all in. They, they, they reviewed, you know, the most dangerous intersections in, in the Pioneer Valley. It's none in Southampton. Um, yeah, no, they, I guess that that's probably, there wasn't really anything that really caught my eye that I would report specifically to Southampton from that. Paul, we can't hear you.
Paul, can't hear you, Paul. Not working. All right, uh, let's see if he clicks his mic back on.
You're on mute, Paul. You're on mute.
Try that.
Here?
Yeah.
Do you hear me now?
Little better.
Um, John Martin, I had asked before about the bike path. Anything new on that?
Well, still waiting for the funding to, to go through and get approved.
All right. If nobody's got anything else they had, I've got a statement here from the Gazette for these legal ads for tonight. The Milky ad, the Felton, and there was one prior, but I've got a warrant here. I need approval. Seven thirty, seven twenty-one, they've all been paid by the applicants for those legal, legal ads. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other business from anyone?
Uh, just a question. Paul forgot. Are you still on the Green, the Bike Path Committee, the Greenway Committee?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Still waiting for money.
Okay.
Um, without hearing any further, uh, business, I'll say goodnight and we'll adjourn and we'll see you on November fourth, day after the election, when they're still counting the ballots, but yet we'll, we'll have a party that night, won't we? Hey, thanks, you, thanks again. I can't tell you how much I like the team effort here when it comes to Zoom sharing. I gotta get this thing down. I got all the files. I just don't know how the hell to pull them up.
No problem, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, yeah, Chair.
We're, we're behind you a hundred percent.
Paul, you got this. You got this, Paul.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.